Hello, everyone. I call the Select Board meeting to order tonight, November 15th at 7:33 PM. A motion to open our meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And that was Mr. McCrisky and Mr. Cavey?
Yes, Mr. Cavey votes aye.
Thank you, I hear you now, thank you very much. Take for roll call, Mr. Gito.
Yes.
Corra.
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky.
Mr. McCrisky, you are on me.
And Mr. Cavey, I think I heard Mr. McCrisky, I can see him, but I cannot hear him. Can you say affirmative, present?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, and I am here. I asked if you are able to stand and please salute our flag. In accordance with Governor Baker's Declaration of June 16th, 2021, granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to public board and town meetings, and recently extended until March 31st, 2023, this meeting will be conducted, both in person and virtually via Google Meets. The meeting may be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stoughtonTV.org. A recording of the meeting transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if live broadcast or live streaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. I would like everyone to know, I was informed a little bit earlier today, that SMAC had their wires, their Verizon cable wires were cut, so this meeting may or may not be livestreamed. They were trying to get a hold of Verizon to come and fix their internet, so this may just be recorded, but hopefully throughout the night it will be livestreamed as well. So that's it. The other, I'm using my chair's discretion to take a few things out of order, that is item number four, which is Town Manager Comment, and item number nine, which is Executive Session to Discuss Strategy Regarding Non-Union Personnel Pursuant to GL Chapter 30A, Section 21A2 Town Meeting. So first, I'll address the Town Manager, I'm sorry, Town Manager. First, the reason that meeting will be canceled is because our Town Council is unable to attend tonight's meeting, and we needed to get additional information before we can move forward. So that Executive Session meeting will be canceled tonight. The other is Town Manager Comments. I would like Mr. Tisdale, he had a question several Select Board meetings regarding rodents, and if you're prepared to address that now, I hand the mic over to you.
Thank you very much. Just an overall update on the fire station project. Where we stand now with the fire station project is, the project is being permitted through the Conservation Commission and Planning Boards. Various comments have come up at those meetings and through the Select Board concerning rodents in that area, rats specifically. And just so that the public knows, built into the bid documents, when we go out for bid, even for the demo of the building, before, during, and after construction, there'll be rodent control measures put in place. There's a pest management program as part of the specifications. There's already a rodent issue out there now, currently, before any kind of construction, so hopefully, when the project's complete, the area and surrounding areas will be better off with the improvements from the pest management program for the project. That would be the goal. Just a couple of the points for the project, it's still on track to be bid, January, February timeframe, that has not changed. And then, also, for those of you who have not heard, the town has received the $5.4 million in the Opera Funds, that's sitting in our bank account as we speak, for the Freeman Street portion of the project.
Do you need some applause, Mr.?
Oh, yeah.
That's great news, thank you for sharing.
I got a few more comments, if you don't mind, Town Manager comments. I do have to put these glasses on for the first time, because I am realizing I'm blind now. I don't know, I'm just not used to it yet. This is what you've all done to me over the last few months. So the first comment will be the statement from the Economic Development Coordinator, Pam McCarthy. She's also currently the acting Town Planner. She submitted an application to the Community One Stop Program, as you may recall, for the highest and best use study of the train depot. We did get word that we were awarded that grant for $25,000. Recently, we're expected to finish the contract documents within the next month, and then we'll have the project plan created after that. The Community Choice Power Supply Program, thanks to the relaunch of the Stoughton Community Choice Aggregation Program, the community will now be able to get the savings that they've actually earned in the past of about $1.5 million on electricity. We've all heard what's going on in the news about electricity. Currently, with the rates going higher, this locks the town into a better rate than you normally would get. The program was originally initiated by Pam in the Select Board, working with Old Colony Planning Council and Colonial Power Group. Due to the fact that the approved plan was in place, I was able to enter into an agreement with a third-party supplier. The town of Stoughton is pleased to announce that Direct Energy Services has been selected as the supplier for the Community Choice Power Supply Program. Direct will provide electric supply power for all customers currently on national grid in Stoughton. Residents should look for a mailing around November 15th, which is right about now. The mailing does explain how to opt out of the program if you choose to, so everybody is able to opt out of it if you are not interested. A public forum will be held in the Town Hall, the Great Hall, on December 7th at 7:00 PM. Colonial Power will be there to answer any questions you may have. The meeting will be available on SMAC also. There's also additional information on the Stoughton website. Last but not least, the Special Capital Project Survey that the Select Board initiated about a month ago, the survey is now available on the town website, I think I put it on the Town Manager Facebook page, and I think we've sent emails to Town Meeting reps. So, pretty simple, there's five or six items on it, it's a rating system, one to five, rank the projects accordingly of what your highest priority is. And that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Now we'll go to Citizen.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. If you would indulge me, I have a couple of passings of some Stoughton residents I'd like to read into the record, as well as a town employee.
Yes, please proceed, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First is to announce the passing of Bruce Fencer, 80, as a resident of Stoughton, who died peacefully on Tuesday, November 8th, surrounded by his loving family. He was the husband of Kathleen Farrell Fencer for 55 years, son of the late Horace and Gertrude Newton Fencer, and was born and raised in Brockton. He was a graduate of Brockton High School, class of 1961, and Coine Electrical School in Boston. He was a resident of Stoughton for 53 years. Bruce served in the U.S. Navy and was a veteran of the Vietnam Era. He was an electrical engineer and vice president at E.H. Mahard Incorporated in Boston for 34 years, before being the chief electrical engineer and vice president at Crowley Engineering in Middleborough for four years. He was then an electrical quality engineer for R.W. Sullivan in Boston for 10 years, until his retirement in 2015. He was a Boy Scout troop leader in Troop 516 in Stoughton for 35 years, also active with the Berwick Boys Foundation in West Bridgewater. His greatest joy was spending time with his family and vacationing in Millbridge, Maine. In addition to his wife, Bruce is survived, I'm sorry, survived by his children Rebecca Lyons and her husband Dennis of Whitman, Peter Fencer and his wife Amy, as well as his grandchildren Matthew, Mary, Allison, and Dylan. He was the brother of twin siblings Colin Fencer of Maine and Colleen Vaughn of North Carolina, Glenn Fencer of Bourne, twin brothers Clark Fencer of Boston and Craig Fencer of Maine, Michael Fencer of Georgia, and the late Mary Lou Fencer and Gail Fencer. He's also survived by his nieces and nephews. His passing followed with a funeral from Fawley Funeral Home on November 14th, with a mass and interment at St. Patrick Cemetery in Brockton. And Bruce, I knew him personally, as his son is my neighbor, but knew Bruce when, years ago, I went to many Eagle Scout ceremonies at Troop 516, and Bruce was a mentor to many, me included. He was a very kind, giving person. He invested a lot of time with young folks in town, especially the Boy Scouts, but encouraging them to get involved with their community. He will sorely be missed. And then, we have Dorothy Dottie Clem. Dorothy F. Healan Clem, aged 85 in Stoughton, passed away peacefully, surrounded by her loving family on November 12th, 2022. Born in Stoughton, she was the daughter of the late Frances and Katilda Hellman Healan, and was the loving wife of the late Robert G. Clem. She attended Stoughton High School and graduated the class of 1955. Dorothy was known as Dirty Dot on the field hockey team for her special style of play. As a young professional, she relished her job in Boston and enjoyed taking the train every day from Stoughton Center. Her job allowed her the opportunity to sing at Symphony Hall as a part of the John Hancock Christmas Chorus. She married the love of her life Bobby on June 20th, 1959, and lived 23 happy years together. Then spent the next 40 continuing to love him. Together, they built a wonderful family and raised their family, and all were active in the members of the community of Stoughton, participating in Little Theater, Bowling, and the Stoughton Youth Athletic Club. Ultimately, the role she relished most was serving as an enduring mother of her four children, Joanne Hansen of Sandwich, Gail Conley of Situate, Cheryl Gestita of Hanover, Paula White of Norwell, and was the proud grandma or nie-nie to her 11 grandkids, and had a special relationship with her numerous nieces and nephews. She loved nothing more than serving the center of attention for which the Clem clan rotated. She was an extraordinary role model in how to deal with unexpected events in life, and all their forms and astonishing grit and determination. Visitation will be at Fawley Funeral Home on 358 Park Street in Stoughton on Saturday, November 19th, from 9:00 to 11:00, followed by a graveside service at Holy Sepulcher at 11:30. And we had notification from our DPW informing us of the untimely passing of their coworker, Ms. Kathy Powers, who passed away on Friday, November 11th. Kathy was only 54 years old, and she is going to be sadly missed by her coworkers, and I would offer all three of these people the condolences of the Stoughton Select Board on behalf of the residents of the town, and ask that we recognize a moment of silence, please.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky, for sharing that information, because sometimes we don't know about these things that are going on, the passing away, so thank you, you do a very good job, and Mr. Corra also does a very good job bringing that to everyone's attention. So thank you so much. Yes, Mr. Gito.
Perhaps the Town Manager could mention also, what is, how to deal with mattresses? I've got a lot of calls on that, and I'm sure that he knows the answer. And I think it's a good one, if I'm not mistaken.
I hope so. If you are not aware, the state has changed the regulations of what towns can deliver to the places we deliver our trash to, to get rid of. They no longer take mattresses along with some other items, but the big deal is the mattresses, obviously, they're big, large-scale items that you could just leave on the curb before. Now DPW will be taking those mattresses, they've hired a company that will take the mattresses, they'll pick them up, and they'll store them in quantity, and then get rid of them at periodic times. I believe there's a cost associated with this, but I don't know off the top of my head, so I apologize. I don't know if it's a cost to the residents, but there's a cost to the town, I just don't know what that number is off the top of my head. But the service will still be there, just a little more work on your part to get rid of the mattress, but the town will still take care of it.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale, and thank you, Mr. Gito. Now for our citizens' comments. Ms. Walsh, and I don't know, and then was Peter, and then it's Ms. Harbeck. Please step forward, state your name and address. Thank you.
At the beginning of this month, there was a big change in the trash collections, and I guess I'm the pessimist who foresaw huge problems. I know it took some of my neighbors a couple of weeks to catch on that they were putting their trash out a day early, but I noticed tonight that everybody seems to have caught on. But I want to praise the employees at the DPW. Sometimes they had to backtrack, people didn't have their trash out. If you were used to having your trash picked up at 11:00, and all of a sudden they show up at 8:00, and they did that. I had occasion to call the DPW twice, the phone was answered promptly, a very pleasant person answered my questions very pleasantly, didn't show any exasperation that I might have been the 300th call she had to answer that day, and I think they just showed their professionalism. Whoever put the program together did, it appears to have done a very good job, and like all human beings, it'll take us a while to accept change, but we will, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh, and Mr. Tisdale, please pass the word on to the DPW Department and thank them for their service. I don't think they get recognized enough.
Absolutely.
Mr. Banus, how are you? Please state your name and your address.
Oh, it's green, thank you. Good evening, my name's Peter Banus, 41, Walnut Court, Stoughton, Mass, Precinct 2, Town Meeting Rep, and this is just addressed, as I've done this previously, to... Yep, sure, sorry. This is just addressed to the Select Board members, Town Manager, the Engineering Department, and the Conservation Commission, and the Planning Board, and dated 11/14. I would appreciate today's documentation being added to my other seven documents that have already been received by town officials since January 24th of '22. After more review of the Orange Special Town Meeting Book dated 12/21, I would like to refer to pages 5 and 6 under specifications, and refer to the nine bullet points listed on those pages attached. Since I am not a developer or a builder, just an active town meeting member and taxpayer, I thought that the public deserved a discussion that I previously mentioned in my citizens' comments on November 1st. I have personally spoken with Select Board members, Fire Chief and Deputy Fire Chief, I have also participated in board meetings with the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. Neither of these boards have vetted this project, neither of these, and the taxpayer money has been spent on architecture and engineering.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I apologize for my interruption.
Yes, excuse me, Mr. Banus. Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
That's fine.
Madam Chair, I'd like to be counted as saying that I do not think this is an appropriate use of citizens' comments. Again, citizens' comments was my motion that I made years ago, for issues that need the board's attention immediately and can't wait till the next meeting. This message is becoming a political campaign on an issue that has already passed. I'm not looking to thwart anybody's right to be heard on issues of importance, but this is becoming a political campaign to bring information forward that's already been dealt with, and this is not the forum for it.
If I could finish this, address some of those points that he's making?
So, Mr. Banus, is this the letter that you presented, you said, on November 1st?
This is the letter that I'm reading into the record today.
Okay.
This is a new letter, and it has to do with the whole deal on 400 Prospect Street. Yes, it's been voted on, and I have some comments about the December 6th meeting in the end of this letter.
Well, Madam Chair, this isn't the format for that. If this is gonna be the political speech of Mr. Banus at every Select Board meeting, that is not the reason for that, okay? The issue has been passed, if somebody disagrees with any part of that, they can deal with that, you know, in an appropriate manner, if he wants to apply for time to be on to the agenda, so that the board can plan for this accordingly, I would have no problem with it. That's his right as a citizen to request time, but utilizing citizens' comments that's not taken into consideration for the timing of the agenda puts this board going way over on our issues, and it's not fair to the people that have waited to be on the agenda instead of going through this process. So I would ask that this not be allowed tonight, and that Mr. Banus request time to come on the board where he can be scheduled appropriately to have his voice heard.
All right, Mr. McCrisky, then my question is, how can we have a public discussion about all the issues that have transpired since the beginning of this project? We need a public discussion, there's a special town meeting, I've already contacted the Town Moderator, Mr. Marlin, he said he's looking into it with legal counsel, okay? And my only question is, we've had closed meetings, the Select Board members that wanted to be involved in the meetings were told by the Town Manager they couldn't be involved, and that's all documented in my previous letters. The summary of today's letter, I would have been done by now if you weren't interfering with me making this public statement. This is my right to do this as a citizen, okay, the First Amendment, but not only is it my right as a citizen and a taxpayer, this affects the whole town, right?
Okay, well, there we go again, we're going into a political discussion now, this is your concern, you have a right to have your concerns heard, but not its citizens' comments when it's not being scheduled into the meeting so we can appropriately plan for the discussions during the meeting. This issue's been vetted, this issue's only being, your issues are being brought up only by you, and I don't think that this is the appropriate venue for that. I said, and I'll repeat, if you want to be heard before the board, the proper way to do it is to ask the chair to be put on the agenda with an appropriate amount of time placed on the agenda, so the board can conduct the business in a timely manner. So if you disagree with that, I'm sorry. And again, Madam Chair, I will end my comments now, you can do what you decide you want to do, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. Mr. Banus, I can understand Mr. McCrisky's point, because as you make reference to certain page numbers on a document, we don't have the document in front of us to even...
You have the document that I turned in to the Select Board Secretary.
Yes, so what I plan to do is put you on the agenda so we can have, so you can make your comment.
Will that be...
Or, you just have a short amount of, I think, maybe five sentences left, so what I should have done, should have prefaced all of the comments for citizens by saying, this is, the comments that you make should be of an urgent nature that is not going to be addressed, that has not been addressed. So, but in this case, since I did not say that in advance, I will give you the opportunity to finish your letter by reading it, or we could put it on the agenda to pay specific attention to it. So at this point in time, your choice, Mr. Banus.
I would just assume, I would have been done by now and gone, and I understand completely Mr. McCrisky's concerns.
Yes.
We need to have a discussion publicly, not closed meetings, not meetings where Select Board members were not allowed to be there, those decisions are made by the previous Town Manager. And so, there's many people in town that have concerns about this issue, and I'm just bringing it to the forefront, and I'm sorry if it rubs Mr. McCrisky the wrong way, but this is stuff that needs to be talked about.
Well, Mr. Banus, your thoughts and ideas and comments are important, they're valuable. So either, what's your, what's your choice?
I'll finish, I'll finish, and I'll be done, and then, if the board decides...
So then that means that you will not approach me to have it on the agenda to discuss?
That's correct, you can, once I finish this letter, okay, and Mr. Marlin lets me know whether or not we can bring it to the attention of the Special Town Meeting, because it wasn't on the agenda.
It was not on the agenda.
Right, and there's reasons, when we got, the information I got came shortly before the December 6th meeting, and I didn't have a chance to do this, and we voted upon, I'll just finish, okay, and I'm sorry. "I have personally spoken with Select Board members, Fire Chief, Deputy Fire Chief, have participated in board meetings with the Conservation Commission and Planning Board, neither of these boards has vetted the project, and taxpayer money has been spent on architecture and engineering. This raises a very concerning issue. When I was told we couldn't reconsider 850 Park because I was too late, I think we still need a public discussion. This should not be too late, when I have mentioned the lack of transparency in this entire expedited process, and there's many people in town who believe the same thing I believe. I didn't have time to get a, if I need to get the 200 signatures, we'll do that, whatever we need to do. There have been many decisions made to show fiscal irresponsibility in the timing of so many events. The lack of response to the Finance Committee's review, the lack of concern for at least a discussion of 850 Park encourages me, again, to ask the citizens to watch the Select Board meeting of 10/18/22 and the discussion of Item 15, which proves the done deal should never have been finalized without more transparency. SMAC has the meeting, and it's late in the meeting, after two-plus hours, and it will show the reasons for my comments. My final public request is to challenge the Select Board to discuss an executive session or open session. How could Special Town Meeting on 11/28 vote on this issue of reconsideration? You all owe it to the Town Meeting and to the taxpayers." Thank you very much, Peter Banus, I sincerely appreciate the ability to finish this, and I really, I think there's a lot of citizens that feel like I do, it's just not a personal political vendetta. So thank you very much, appreciate everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Banus. Okay, so going forward, citizens' comment is for residents of Stoughton to address issues with the Select Board that need immediate attention, that cannot wait, immediate attention that cannot wait. So I'll start every meeting by stating that, so we don't get confused going forward. Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Harbeck, please step forward. State your name and address. Oh, and Mr. Lurie, please state your name and address.
Good evening, Erika Harbeck, 49, Record Street.
David Lurie, 18, Robinette Road.
Okay, good evening, Select Board. I came tonight to shed light on the recent event regarding the SMAC Board of Directors election, which was scheduled for this past Wednesday, November 9th. This election was years overdue, yet the election never happened. After John Stagnoni passed the gavel to Select Board Appointee Steve Bates to start the election process, John Stagnoni read his letter with false allegations against myself and Peter Brown for the sole purpose of removing his prime competitor, Peter Brown, from the ballot. The ballots were never read. The current Board of Directors, Bates, Marlin, and Co., retreated to a private conference room to contact their attorney via telephone. After about one hour, Select Board Appointee Bob Marlin instructed all the members present to leave, except John... to leave, except John Stagnoni. The members were escorted outside without incident by SMAC's paid police detail. The doors locked behind them while the current Board of Directors and John Stagnoni stayed behind. The meeting never ended. This is all nonsense. I believe John Stagnoni was fearful he would not have enough votes to continue to serve on the Board of Directors. Being the town's highest executive authority...
Excuse me, Ms. Harback.
Yes.
Um, why are you presenting this to the Select Board? And we're getting ready to present our Code of Conduct shortly. You made some derogatory comments about Mr. Stagnone, and it could be true, not true, but that's not really...
Oh, I, that was my opinion.
Your opinion.
When I said, when I said it was all nonsense? Well, his allegations against me and Mr. Brown are nonsense. And I have one sentence left. All I was gonna say is, being the hot town's highest executive authority, I thought you should be aware of this, this fiasco. I mean, it's out of our hands. There was nothing we can do. We're excluded from whatever, and I just thought you should know.
Thank you very much. That was...
If, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Laurie.
Yes. The, the event included me. I was on the ballot as well. I just find it interesting for the board, for the SMAC Board of Directors, and I'm sort of like a casualty in this and that. All of the accusations of flu managed to end and halt an election that I'm not allowed to be on the board because of, of a false allegation that was created. I mean, you know, it's kind of interesting that anybody on a board or committee of any kind in which you need votes in order to get the position you're in, that all you'd have to do, if you're the leader of that organization, type up a nastygram, tell your members on the board to say, let's yank this person through brute force right off the ballot, and guarantee yourself a seat on the board, is kind of, on its face, kind of absurd. I'm a little bit, kind of take, it's a little bit of an insult to me because he went after one person who he felt was the biggest threat to the status quo of how the mismanagement of SMAC is today, and I'm not the guy who he felt was the biggest threat to the status quo, so apparently, so I didn't get any smears toward me. But having said that, the whole thing is, there's a lot of open questions that nobody even knows how to begin answering. It's a, to your, it's, it's, we're bringing it to you and the rest of the board because...
We should, we should see how long we want to carry on with this discussion.
Well, I, I think, well, I, I believe I have my own time to be able to speak.
I understand that, but I'm wondering about the issue that, that the chair raised.
I'll just wrap it up by saying, your, your board is the one that's involved with signing contracts with, with SMAC. I, I strongly recommend that you don't sign anything until things are worked out because things are definitely not right, as things have to be fixed before you move forward.
And we brought a bunch of members with us.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Laurie, and thank you very much, Ms. Harback, for being a, for being a concerned citizen.
Good evening.
Good evening. Please state your name and your address.
I will. Distinguished Select Board.
Yes.
My name, it's gonna be in here. Distinguished Select Board. You are the highest authority in the town, and I am here to ask for your help.
Mr. McCrisky, can you please state your name?
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. Peter Van Tresco, 587 Canton Street, a town meeting rep president gate. Distinguished Select Board, you are the highest authority in the town, and I am here to ask for your help. I am Peter Van Tresco, and I am here to address the meeting at SMAC Studio on November 9th, 2022, to tally the vote for the new committee members. Hopefully, it would be Peter Brown and Roberta Harback. That never happened. Chairman John Stagnone read a vicious slanderous statement attacking Peter Brown, Roberta Harback on allegations that had no merit.
Excuse me, Mr. Van Tresco, I believe we get the point of...
I'm almost finished. It's just, just a couple more lines, please.
Yes, but, but I think we need to bring it to closure because we do have an agenda, and it seemed to be right in line of the previous speakers.
Well, I'll say one thing. You let the other gentleman talk for quite a while. Just give me another minute, and I'm done, please.
A half a minute, how about 30 seconds?
No, half a minute ain't gonna do it.
Okay, so we're gonna...
Yeah, no matter.
The time is ticking.
When John finished the comments...
No disparaging remarks about someone's character?
You're gonna have to speak up.
No disparaging comments about someone's character? You're stating an incident that happened at SMAC?
Well, I'm just stating, I'm stating facts.
And we are in negotiation with the SMAC contract.
Yeah, I know, but I want you to let you know things that have happened that you're not aware of. All right, so...
It sounds like it's very similar to what Mr. Laurie and Ms. Harback just said.
Well, I'm gonna drift off a little bit, too.
What's different?
The committee would not let Peter Brown defend himself on these vicious attacks. I think this was a setup to disqualify Peter Brown and Roberta Harback. They knew we may have had the votes needed for Peter and Roberta Harback to win. But now, saying that, I, I'm gonna, off the top of my head, because I forgot to write this down, Mr. Ed DeFaleese was on the ballot, too, but then he decided to take himself off and just have the two candidates, Peter Brown and Roberta Harback, on. And he went to the station manager, and she said it was plenty of time for her to take the name Eddie DeFaleese off, and I think they left it on purposely because by Eddie being there, being the third guy, he was gonna split the vote. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So one question that I ask, is everyone in the back on my left side, are they members of SMAC?
Yeah.
If you are a member of SMAC, can you please raise your hand? Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, and we are in negotiation with the SMAC contract. So...
Thank you very much again.
You're welcome, Ms...
My name was mentioned, and I want to address what was said. Yes, in fact, I did.
Can you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And your address.
I'm sorry.
And this is, this is the last speaker on this topic as well?
Eddie DeFaleese, 200 Ethel Way. So I decided not to be on the ballot, and I talked to the station manager, went and saw her, and I said, is, is it timely that I do that? And she said, no problem. So she said there was no problem as far as my getting off the ballot. And in fact, she helped me write the words that were necessary to do that, and of course, I signed it and dated it. Then suddenly I get a ballot with my name on it. So that's one issue. But I want to reiterate, reiterate what people have been talking about. I was present at that meeting. I was there to vote, like all the other folks were there, to vote. What was referred to as that letter, I don't know if you guys have a copy of it or not. If not, you should, you get one, of what Stagnone did, I said, okay? That's pretty much on the record. Now, what I couldn't understand was, we weren't able, well, Peter wasn't able to defend himself. They, they shut him right down, and then there's, you know, when some of us wanted to speak up, Bob Mullen come up and kind of, you know, poo-pooed us, you know, you know, just sit there, we'll be back. So I forget, an hour or so, whatever it was, we sat there, and they came back and said that there was not gonna be a meeting. I mean, what do you mean, there's not gonna be a, a meeting? And these people, and here's where the rub comes in. This board, this board recently appointed two people that also were at this meeting and were also part of this, it turned out to be a sham, which I've never seen anything like that done in the town of Stoughton. I've been around as long as some of these others, like Lou party a little longer than me. I've never seen anything like that, and such disrespect. And we were all paying members of SMAC, and Mullen showed such disrespect for us, and they conveniently had a detailed officer there. Now, why was that? You don't have one here. It obviously was a setup so that Mullen could quickly talk to the, the policewoman and say, you know, we gotta get these people out of here. I'm telling you, I've never seen anything like that. These, and you appointed two of these people recently, and that board was out of control and treated us like crap. And I think this board should either reconsider the people they put on there, or at least bring them here, and we can come back and we can talk if you want, but these people should be reprimanded. What John did was, I couldn't, I've never seen it. It was unbelievable to attack another person, and it was unhearsay information that he had, and he admitted, you know, where he got this information. So it's up to you as a board. Do we get enough problems in this town making us look like dirt? And I've resented all those are things that have happened to make us look that way. This is not good. These people are running that organization as if it was their own private company. That is wrong. That's gonna stop, and the only way it's gonna stop is if you people bring them here and let them explain what they did, why they did it, and maybe even consider pulling them off. And the idea about not signing a contract, that's very important because perhaps a whole new board should be appointed. It's very, I, I'm, I'm telling you, I've lived in Stoughton all my life, and have never seen anything like this, ever. I've heard people argue and have disagreements here at town meetings, but not like this. It was a setup. The reason why the police officer was there, she was there to help Mullen usher us out. And he doesn't have to, I mean, he...
Mr. DeFaleese, I understand the point.
All right, so I'll close, and I, I would hope...
Respectfully, I understand your point and the points of the other citizens of the town of Stoughton, Roberta Harback, David Laurie, and the reason all of the members of SMAC are sitting in the audience today because they didn't follow their bylaws according to what you said. But from that point, I'm not prepared to actually go into detail, but we are looking at things.
Okay.
With that said, second point, but second point, I would like to, I have to recognize one of my fellow board members.
Can I just finish with one statement, and I'll, I'll go back in my seat?
Yes.
The other part of this that was terrible is that we didn't get to vote that night because of what the, what Mullen and the crew did. We asked, when will we have the next meeting? And they said, we'll get back to you after we talk to our lawyers. What the heck are we talking to lawyers for? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeFaleese. Mr. Carrera.
Madam Chairman, I think we've heard enough. We can't really make a decision. Doesn't mean we don't hear you, because I was waiting to hear Mr. DeFaleese get to the point where there was no vote taken. Was there actual ballots cast into the box?
Yes, yes.
Who's in control of that?
It's inside, it's in the credence of the station manager.
I think, Madam Chairman, we're gonna have to think about the board setting up something and getting an explanation on it because in the state of Massachusetts, if votes are cast, you don't walk away with the ballots. They gotta be pulled out in 24 hours. There's a way that they can call it a no vote, and whether they're a private entity or a nonprofit, by going after these citizens they chose, I heard, because I'm, I got calls, that they said they were doing something that was incorrect. So if they took it upon themselves to utilize state voting by trying to take them out by saying they were doing something wrong, then the state laws apply to them, and I don't see how anybody can hang on to ballots that long, and they got the keys. And it, it should be, we, we gotta find out what's going on. I mean, I'm not passing judgment, I'm just pointing out certain things that are, that are proper.
We're not passing judgment.
No, no, I know that, I just...
But we, we are doing some things, and we plan to bring it to our fellow board members as soon as we had some more information.
Right.
And shortly.
That's what I want. I want them to understand that we're not, we're not shutting you down, but we gotta get both sides in here to know what's going on.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Quite welcome, Mr. Carrera. We can't, we can't always tell you everything that we're doing, but...
We appreciate, we just wanted our voices heard somewhere. That's it.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing me to finish.
Thank you.
...
Welcome.
As a group of citizens and town meeting members, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, okay, it is...
Are we gonna do this?
Yes. Any other citizens' comments? Okay? Select Board comments? Any Select Board comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Carrera. Oh, who said it?
Is that you, Joe?
Is that you, Joe?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a, a comment to read when...
Yes.
You would allow me?
Yes, please, Mr. McCrisky.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a, a press release, as you're all well aware. I serve as your representative to the Brockton Area Transit, and they have a, a press release that came out on the 9th, and brought, this reads, Brockton Mayor Robert F. Sullivan and the Brockton Area Transit BAT Administrator Michael Lambert announced today that from November 25th through December 31st, BAT's bus and paratransit services will be free, thanks in part to a grant included in the state budget and awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. The program is designed to encourage new customers try transit by offering no-cost trips to shop or dine at local businesses, visit friends and family, or commute to work during the holiday season. We are extremely proud to partner with the Department of Transportation in BAT to provide free holiday service so that our city of champions will be more accessible to Robert Sullivan, and we have a great success in free reduced public transit, including discounted member rail fares for Brockton residents, free weekend bus service for discounts to the Cape Flyer. Increasing public transit is a top priority to seek a reduction in carbon emissions, improve accessibility, and make more affordable residents, businesses, workers, visitors to travel to and from Brockton. Try the Transit Initiative is supported by the state grant, which is awarded to all 15 Commonwealth Regional Transit Authorities, who work together to submit a joint application for a plan to implement. In BAT's service area, all fixed and ADA paratransit services will be offered at no cost to the customers, except included in the planned Rockland Micro Transit Service, Rockland Flex, and local councils on aging. Challenging times where the due to increased costs or pandemic call for creative responses, said BAT Administrator Michael Lambert. BAT offers sincere thanks to the state legislation, legislative delegation, and the Board of Directors for their constant support over the past three years. I am also personally grateful to my regional transit colleagues across the state for their partnership on this project. MassDOT is pleased to have worked closely with the Commonwealth's 15 transit authorities to utilize the funding awarded in the fifth, the fiscal 23 state budget for the Try Transit program. This initiative is another example of the many efforts where MassDOT and the RTAs, which is Regional Transit Authorities, collaborate to improve mobility options for Massachusetts transit customers. Added MassDOT and Rail Transit Administration Meredith Schlesinger. Although primarily designed to attract new customers by easily accessing services, Try Transit will course, offer financial reprieve to current riders during these times of high inflation. It is expected that the savings and increased mobility offered by BAT services will translate into increased spending at local shops and restaurants. It's wonderful to have this hall... It's wonderful to have this holiday season gift in the form of free bus service via Brockton Area Transit, added Chris Cooney, who is the Director of the Metro South Chamber of Commerce. This service helps workers, employers, and shoppers as they celebrate the holidays working with shopping throughout the region. Thank you BAT for this important gift. The Try Transit Initiative is expected to be particularly effective in downtown Brockton with its high concentration of small businesses and transit amenities. With an influx of residents and new business in the downtown area along Main Street, the Try Transit Initiative will be a great resource for the commercial centers, including Campelo, Montello, Westgate, as well the rest of the Brockton and entire BAT service area. The Brockton Holiday Parade is on Saturday, November 26th, and by taking BAT would be an ideal way to travel to downtown for the celebration with pictures and Santa, food trucks, and of course, the parade itself, concluded Mary Walden, the Executive Director of the Old Colony Planning Council. So thank you very much, Madam Chair, for allowing me to read that in. That is a great resource for Stoughton residents. If they're traveling over that way or would like to go see the Brockton Holiday Parade as well, so please look into that. And I'll make sure that this is forwarded to our secretary.
Thank you. We have to find a way to get that posted somewhere on our websites for additional information.
I agree.
All right. Any other Select Board comments? Oh, Mr. Carrera?
I have a concern about advertising our meetings. Not just our meetings, but planning board, conservation. Are we gonna have the boards use one venue to advertise out of? Or are we gonna allow the boards to pick and choose what they want? Because a lot of people did not know that there was a planning board meeting because we advertised it in the Patriot Ledger. Now, I find that a little bit ridiculous because the Brockton Enterprise is mostly in this town. I don't even see the ledger being sold here anymore. So I find that, personally, I find it disturbing. And I don't think it should happen again. If we're gonna use the suburban shopper to put other items in, and that's gonna be our venue, we've always used one. I think it's about time that we make it unilateral across all the boards, that they gotta use one. So I don't know if the town manager wants to say we're gonna, if it's all right to use the suburban shopper so that everybody gets it at their house. Some people don't buy the newspaper anymore. I do, because I like paper. But-
Well, you know, that's a topic that deserves its own agenda item because I hear a lot of people don't read the suburban shopper. So they don't know about meetings.
Well, the suburban shopper comes to your house free, and if you don't read it, then there's a problem. But I don't see how anybody, I knew the planning board was up because I was told from the inside here. But to see it out there in the Patriot Ledger, we haven't used the Patriot Ledger in, I don't know how, long. So I would think that either you, Madam Chairman, or the town manager should instruct that board that if something's going on in this town, they better use something that the people can be reached here.
Mr. Tisdale.
Yeah, I can certainly look into that. I do know the Patriot Ledger has given us a rate of like $12 for posting of legal ads, and the Brockton Enterprise is hundreds of dollars. I think the suburban shopper, the question has to be asked if that's considered a publicly, there's a word for it, it's gotta be legal for public hearings, publicly circulated newspaper. I don't think, I don't believe it is. It is a great way to give information out to people. Every household gets it.
We're advertising the finance committee in there, so is that illegal?
Perhaps we should have this discussion as an agenda item.
Well, it's gonna end up being a problem because they're getting ready to put another meeting out there, and that's what I'm worried about.
Whether you're worried about it or not, perhaps we should get all the information that we need to get on it, and perhaps find out if there is a way to deal with this issue differently. I fully agree with the point that you're making, but I don't think that we're going to get to the end of the road here this evening. And all I'm trying to do is say, maybe we need to get all the information together, perhaps ask council for suggestions, and go from there and solve a problem rather than just talk about it. Okay?
Yep.
So, yes, two things. One is, I will talk with the Chair of the Planning Committee, or I'll ask Mr. Tisdale to talk with the Chair of the Planning Committee. And then the next is, we need an agenda item so we can have a more robust conversation, we can dedicate some time to it.
Madam Chair, Steve Cavey.
Oh, Vice Chair Cavey.
Sorry to jump in here.
Please.
I think we should probably just start with Town Council, because we may have no legal authority to tell another board where to publish, to the extent that they're still publishing within a legal periodical. So, and not be, we might not be able to choose who gets the money and who doesn't get the money. And that could actually cause some issues, legal issues for us if we attempt to. So I would just run this by Town Council before we ask anybody to do anything. Because we have, A, we may have no jurisdiction over where these boards publish or where they choose to publish. I know that, as Mr. Tisdale said, the suburban shopper does not constitute a legal periodical where we can publish these meetings. And so the boards that use that typically publish in more than one place, they'll publish it within, you know, the enterprise as well as the suburban shopper, so that they can actually reach people and also fulfill the legal requirement of publishing these meetings. But regardless, I think all of this has to go through council, so we don't step in it, because these things are very much determined by a set of legalities that I just don't wanna, I don't wanna step in the wrong, make a mistake here.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cavey. Yes, we should do that, talk to Town Council. All right. I see an affirmative.
I will talk to Town Council about that issue.
Thank you very much. We're all set? You're welcome. Any other Select Board comments? Okay. Mr. Gito.
I was going to make a longer point on this, but I was very just heartened by the vote nationally on the elections this past, this past week. And was very pleased to see how many people voted in the town of Stoughton. I guess I was pleased for three reasons. One is, I thought that in Massachusetts, we should be very proud that both our governor and our incoming governor were able to deal with one another in a very civilized fashion and with a good opportunity to make a good transition from one group to another in crossing party lines and doing that. I guess on another point, at the national level in the vote that came in, I think it was important that we recognize that perhaps extremism on either side, but especially with the things that have been going on regarding, are we going to even consider the election to be valid or not, sort of, I hope, got put in place a little bit. And I would also, perhaps this is my bias showing, in terms of looking at the point of view of a more centrist kind of position, I think we may have been looking also at the idea that the us/them racial rhetoric maybe needs to be tamped down and perhaps will be tamped down. And sort of overturning basically what we had determined to be legitimate things for people to do in terms of rights to vote and civil rights. There's been a lot of discussion without change, but I think a lot of hurt has been done, and I hope that we're able to deal with that. Now, that's not, that's my opinion. And the last thing is that I'm so happy that we had almost 50% of the people in Stoughton voting. I think that's very important. And I'll leave to another day my own spiel on the importance of voting in local elections, how these votes affect our daily lives, how we're the government, the people are the government in Stoughton, and they are represented through the town meeting. So those 168 people are the people that sit around the campfire of our way of doing business. And we need to recognize that, the importance of that, and recognize that those people make the determinations of what happens with the town, what it looks like, what it feels like, you know? I would say, and I'll just use these words, is the town pretty or gritty, you know? And does it provide what we really want to have? What does it cost to maintain the services that we have? What does it cost to maintain the infrastructure we have? And how do we, how do we make sure that all those things happen? We get a lot of encouragement to vote in state and federal elections. We need to recognize that we have so much to gain by being part of government, whether you're running for office, whether you're just going out and voting, and thinking about what wonderful opportunities we have as citizens of this country, citizens of the town, to affect what goes on in the community. I mean, there were a lot of things that happened here tonight, where people came and said, you know, there's gotta be some thinking about things. There's an awful lot of stuff that needs to be done. And we only deal with it sometimes when it's in our backyard, but all those things make a huge difference. I hope we can begin to take that to heart. So I'm sorry for taking the time, but I think it's kind of important.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. You brought up some very valid points. Moving right along, my comment. Many did not attend, can you hear me now? Many did not attend the Glen Echo ribbon-cutting ceremony because they said they didn't know about it. But I did attend, and Senator Timmeltie presented us the town, the Select Board, with a proclamation. And I just wanted the opportunity to read it to you. "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate, official citation. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to the town of Stoughton in recognition of this joyous occasion of the grand opening of Glen Echo Park. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success. That this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate." It's signed by Karen Spelka, Michael Hurley, and Walter F. Timmeltie. Thank you very much for the opportunity to read this to you.
It was a nice ceremony.
Yes, it was. Moving right along to our consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull any of our consent agendas? If that is no, I accept a motion to- Sure.
Motion to approve this consent agenda.
Okay.
Hold on, Mr. Gito has a question.
Let me get to my notes, I'm sorry here. On the constables?
Yes.
Is there any limit on the number? Or, we seem to have an awful lot of requests coming in, and I don't know if that's good, bad, or not. And I don't know whether we should at least discuss this at some time, or get an answer to that question.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
To answer Mr. Gito's question, we had reduced the constables years ago to, I believe, 10 because of that same reason, there was a lot out there. I don't believe we're at 10 now. And the one that we'll be voting on, on this issue, if you recall, I had the applicant come back because the paperwork was just, you know, wrong in so many ways. So that has all been corrected on that one. But, and I know we had a problem finding some of our minutes, but that, I want to say, was probably in the early 2000s that we had reduced that number, because there were people walking around with badges that didn't need them. And so we can look into that, though, and get the exact number.
I want to be clear that I had no, I wasn't directing that at the current applicant. I just, it was just a general question.
We understand that. So there was a motion, it was second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye as well. Did I hear Mr. Cavey?
Aye, sorry, I took a second.
Thank you very much. So for those in the audience, Constable Application, Mr. Silva, it was approved, congratulations. Lot of hard work went into that. For those in the audience, the Water Connection application was approved as well on Lawyer Lane. So that was approved in the consent agenda. And the applicant for the Energy and Sustainability Committee, Rigard Eva Jr.
Ah, Rigard.
Yes, yes, it was approved. Did you want to say a few words? I don't think we've ever met you. But it was approved, but if you want to say, why did you want to be on that committee? Share with us. Please state your name and your address.
But due to the pandemic here and my poor hearing, in-person meetings are the only ones that I can understand what people are saying. So I'm very happy to be here tonight. And I hope that if you approve my application for membership, that I will be able to assist in making the Page Street Transfer Facility more effective and profitable by pre-sorting in a more effective way. And I bring some experience to the idea of recycling. And I have left- And I have left some of the Waste Advantage and Resource Recycling magazines, which are nationally published, showing effective and efficient methods used by other towns across the country. I've left them with the Highway Department, and I'd be happy to leave them with anyone else that would like to look at them. I've brought along the latest samples tonight, which I'd be happy to bring and let you just take a look at them. I'm sure that you might be curious. Our, our future and all of those that are coming after us is in jeopardy with the climate change. And we need to do everything we can to make our use of the resources more efficient.
Well, thank you very, very much. We did approve your application. We did it under the consent agenda. So you are on the committee. So thank you for all of your words of knowledge and insight. Thank you very much. So next steps, you would have to get sworn in at the town clerk's office and then just join the meetings.
Yes.
If we can get it advertised, right? So thank you very much.
May I leave the most recent copies of two magazines? I'll start with you. I apologize to those that are watching on video. They would not benefit, but... Resource Recycling is Oregon, where that's published. And this comes from South. You're welcome.
And welcome to the committee.
Fact issues, and I'd be happy to drop them off wherever you feel it'd be most useful. The Highway Department, perhaps?
We'll start off here, and then I'll, maybe you can give me your contact information.
Yeah, there've been two, two items banned from waste stream just recently by the DEP. And one of them is cardboard, the other class. And so again, perhaps the transfer facility at Page Street might be made more efficient. They do a good job with cardboard. And as an occupant of one of the condo associations, we started, of course, taking care of our own.
Excuse me, Ms. Eva. Your insightfulness is very important, but I'll have to, I'll have to move to the next agenda item.
It's amazing what a good example we'll do.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Have a good evening. And don't forget to get sworn in at the clerk's office. Please get sworn in at the clerk's office at the, at your earliest convenience, so you can join the meetings. All right, thank you so much. So I'll take a couple of things out of order. We'll go right to our public hearings. I'll ask our vice chair if you are able, Vice Chair Kavy, to read into the records.
Madam Chair, I apologize. If possible, somebody present able to read that. I, the reason I'm not able to attend the meeting tonight, unfortunately, is I have COVID now, and my voice is pretty raw. And if someone could please just do me one kind of favor.
No worries, Vice Chair Kavy. Mr. Carrara volunteered to read it into the records.
Mr. Carrara, thank you very much, I appreciate you.
No problem, Mr. Kavy. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Tuesday, November 15, 2022, to consider the application of Alex Good Taste Restaurant for a Carmen Vicure license at 445 Central Street, Stoughton, Mass. 02072. The hearing is to be held at 8:45 PM. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass., and via Google Meets and broadcast via Stoughton Media, Access Television, and livestream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for the public comment available by calling the Select Board office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to onewilson@stoughtonmass.gov. And that's per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Chair, Select Board, enacting as the local licensing authority. Motion to open the hearing? No, no, I made the motion to open, you can...
Second.
Second, that's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. McCrisky?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Are the owners or representatives of the restaurant in the audience or online? If you want to... Oh, yes, hi, how are you? Can you please step forward and sit at our table and introduce yourself? So the way the process will work is Mr., one of the vice, the Vice Chair Kavy or Mr. Carrara, please have a seat. Just one minute, I just wanted you to know about the process, so you won't be surprised.
I'm Alexandra Ammon. I'm living in Brockton.
Pull your, pull the mic close to you. Is it turned on? I can't tell.
She's on, no, try to sit again, you're green.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Alexandra Ammon. I'm living in Brockton. And I used to work for the YMCA for nine years. And I have my own daycare right now, and I've decided to open my own restaurant now.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
So the process is, we'll have, maybe Mr. Carrara, yeah. Okay, so what the heads of the department, when they reviewed your facilities and your application, what were their findings? And then they will ask you a few questions. And then the citizens will ask you a few questions. And then you'll make a comment in closing remarks. And then we'll take, we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll take a vote. Okay. To extend an offer to you for the, for the permit, for the license. Okay. All right, so Mr. Carrara.
Madam Chairman, these are the checklist from all the departments. We have certified mail receipts that were sent out. We have from the Brian Holmes Deputy Chief from the Police Department, he has no objections. From the Fire Department, we have response from them. The Fire Department has no objections to the request. From Sean Leahy of the Board of Health, the Board of Health has no objections for the Carmen Vicure license for this establishment. From the Building and Zoning Department, Jack Erickson, department has no issues with the matter. From the Treasurer's Office, Teresa Cardozo, there is no outstanding monies, and there's no objection. From the Water and Sewer Department, from Anna, the meter at the location is not reading correctly, and we need to get a repair. It does not have a Neptune meter. So that's the only thing that seems to be in trick. We have the business contact information for the restaurant. It's Alex Good Taste Restaurant, and the contract person is Alexandra Ammon, and her phone number and her email is on file. The premises is going to be no counter seating?
What's that?
I can't, I think it's a zero.
Oh, just one minute. Would you like to step forward? Ellen Green, Vice President at the YMCA. Yes, please.
Hi. I'm Ellen Green, Vice President of O'Colony YMCA in Stoughton. I just wanted to make sure that the water and sewer issue has nothing to do with her. It's an outside, we have a couple of different readings, and it's an outside reading, we're trying to get that resolved. So I just want to make sure there's, we have three units. The one that she's connected to has nothing to do with that other issue. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Green.
It, it shows on this application there's no counter seating, it's, that's a zero?
There's no, oh, I guess you could answer that.
Either, either a...
No counter seating.
Okay.
There's tables.
The, the total of table seating says 12. It will operate from, there are restrooms, one, one woman, one man. And it'll operate from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And the dumpster is there, and that's all proper. We have a workman's comp that's filled out, and it's filled out with three employees, and that's in effect. The only thing I'm looking for is the grease trap. There is, there is a seating plan in, in here too, also.
We do, and it's, the BAH has, yeah, Sean Leahy, their team, looked at it.
I, I don't have a...
It is not an external grease trap.
It's an internal, all right.
And so there are specific requirements because of that.
Right, that's why you won't, you won't have a, a pump thing. They have, they have a set disposal with the company that'll take care of it, so I understand that.
Wonderful.
And that's all you have, Madam Chairman?
Do my fellow board members have questions? For either Ms. Green or, I'm sorry, you're...
I have none.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. You want to share anything about the restaurant? Like, what's on the menu? We always are interested in that.
I have American and Caribbean food on the menu. Some like good food, Haitian food, all kind of food.
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Aye.
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 Has the public been offered a chance to comment?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Aye.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Is the representative going to the next open hearing? National Grid Verizon poll install? Is a representative here? Okay. So please read into the records for National Grid.
Madam Chair, I missed, is there a representative?
No, there is, does not seem to be a representative for National Grid here.
Well, I don't, I mean, through you to the town manager. I don't know what this is. I'm not, I'm not crazy about, you know, approving things without being able to ask questions of these people when they come before us, unless the town manager, can you answer any questions? Did it freeze up, can you hear me?
Pardon, Mr. McCrisky?
No, just I didn't hear anybody responding, but I'll wait.
Okay.
I have a question, so if anybody wants to answer it, when the time comes.
Okay, so we have an issue, I mean, it's not an issue, but it's a question on the table. Did you want to move forward?
I don't like...
There's no National Grid.
I don't like to go without one of them being here, so there can be a question to ask. I don't think we should put it on the town manager. Plus, as I stated the last time around, I'm not happy with National Grid in the telephone poles in this town that have been hanging out there unfinished two to three years. And I know the town manager's too busy, you know, he's had a lot on his plate, so I'm sure he hasn't reached out to them and got too many answers. But it's, some of this has got to stop, that you got poles that are half-chopped off with another pole sticking beside it. They've been sitting there for two years through all kinds of wind. Some of them, you can see, are showing, showing failure again. And I, I, I think if we get some heavy, heavy winter, they're going to be laying down. And there's no reason at all that they can't finish these projects, that basically it's, it's telephone wires that haven't been moved over. Edison's over, which is probably National Grid. And the poles, most of them are owned by the telephone pump companies, so I already made up my mind. I wasn't going to vote for another pole move until they start fixing some of the stuff that's put in the lot. Driver's in jeopardy, you got loose wires swinging in, in lines. I've got out myself and, and wire tied them back, and, and it's ridiculous. Central Street, there has to be 15 poles that aren't, aren't finished. They're just languishing out there. And there's many on other side streets, and it's just, I, I just, I can't, it's just crazy.
Thank you, Mr. Carrara. I wanted, Mr. Gieto had his hand up. Did you still have that question?
I do.
All righty, Mr. Gieto.
Haven't forgotten it yet. As you come out from, you, you might want to pass this question along. As you come out of Old Maple Street, I mean, old Page Street, onto Page, on the right-hand side, they're putting a pole just about the same distance from the, the right-of-way that's on the right. They're putting a pole there, and they're taking a pole that is just about the same distance on the left and moving it further up toward Turnpike Street, I think. And I'm wondering if that makes an awful lot of sense. So it looks like they're moving the pole on the left-hand side to make sure that they don't hit anything, but maybe that's not true. On the right-hand side, where the pole is now, it's further away from the, the intersection, and they're moving it closer to the intersection. And so they're either only going to turn left and not turn right, or I don't understand why, why, why they're doing it, or there's plenty of room. I, I don't know what, what the story is there, but that's my question. It doesn't seem to make an awful lot of sense to me. The one on the left makes sense, the one on the right does not.
So is there, I'm sorry, Mr. Tisdale, I was going to ask for a motion to postpone this, but... this, but...
Madam Chair, I have a question as well.
Can I, before I give up my...
Yes, Mr. Gito.
My talking here.
Sure.
I agree with Mr. Carrara. I think there are an awful lot of poles that need to be dealt with, the double pole issue. I think it occurs in every community in the state of Massachusetts. To have a discussion about it as part of a particular pole moving doesn't seem to make an awful lot of sense to me. And I don't know whether or not we could find out where all of these double poles are, if the engineering department of DPW knows, knows where they are, and we could get a whole list of them and deal with them as a, let's find out what your plan is to move them, and it may take three or four years to do them all, but, you know, pick the ones that are the, the most difficult ones and, and have a plan to fix them, rather than just yammering at one another, I think might be helpful.
Well, every, every day you travel home, you drive by...
Scott, I understand, if you don't mind my interrupting you, that there are an awful lot of them in town. What I would like to see happen is not talk about it, but find a plan to solve the problem. That's all I want to do. I'm not trying to, to just get a listing of the ones that are there, because I can see them too. But if we have something that says where they are, what are you going to do about it in total and move from there, it's better than just talking about it and talking about the ones that we, we want to talk about. That's all I'd like to do, and I'm, I sort of nodded or, or mentioned, do we have a plan? I mean, do we know where they are? I thought that I saw the, the town manager nodding. I don't know if that's true or not. You don't know. That's fine, then we need to find out, or they need to tell us.
Well, let me ask Mr. Tisdale, are you the, the liaison between the town and National Grid? Because we have a representative, or is it, do you delegate that down to DPW? So is there someone that we can talk to, that you or DPW can talk to, to say, what is the plan? We, as you can tell, there's some complaints, some issues that we want to get resolved. So what's your take on this? Because this is not the first time we've brought this up, but they've fixed some things, and then they go back, and we have the issue all over again.
Yeah. Our Public Works Director, Paul, he's actually had recent discussions with National Grid. I don't know the details of the discussions, but he does have a contact over there now, as of a week or so ago. I think it'd be proper to bring them in, get a game plan. It doesn't even have to be discussed yet. Hopefully, the plan's already created. They just need to explain it to us. But on the second point about them being here for their pole placement, I think they should be here to answer questions, like every, typically every applicant is. So we may be able to kill two birds with one stone. Maybe it's two different agenda items on the same night to make it more of an efficient meeting, but I do agree with Mr. Gito, we probably shouldn't talk about that while they have their pole application, and it should be two different items.
Okay.
I will, I will talk to Paul...
Okay.
To reach out to them and try to coordinate a meeting with them soon to see if they have a plan in place.
Sounds wonderful. I see Mr. McCrisky has his hand raised. Mr. McCrisky, I'm recognizing you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Mr. Jafun did reach out and had contacts, because I've been asking for those contact numbers for, I don't know how long now. I have a bigger issue with our utilities, and I'll pick two instances that you could visualize and see for yourselves tomorrow. The intersection of Canton Street and School Street, and the intersection of Cushing Street are where it comes out on the Canton Street. It's the same pole that we voted a few months back to put a mirror up there to, to improve safety at that intersection. Those two poles have wires that have haphazardly been either duct taped or zip-tied to the bottom of the pole. The one that is at Cushing Street is in the travelway of the sidewalk, and it, it moves beyond the pole for about 12 inches. I've been bringing this up for months, that I'm, and my job is safety and risk management, and this is a safety hazard. A youth riding their bicycle on the sidewalk, not paying attention, and hits that, and they're thrown from their bike into the travelway, I don't even want to be there if that happens. I've been bringing these things up for months, and the one at Canton and School, I've been bringing up for two years. Two years that this, this has been like this. Again, people walk by it, it, it sticks out from the, the pole on both sides, and somebody to shut me up went up there and took some black electrical tape and just tried to neaten it up. It's not solving the problem. It's a safety issue. And, you know, these utilities come to us, and they propose all these new projects, but they do nothing to fix the junk that they leave behind, you know? And I think it's time that we have a public carry and that we hold them accountable, and we bring these things up with a corrective action plan when they can give us dates and times when these will be done. You know, they're all about making money and doing all the new pole locations, getting everything done, but they need to fix the safety defects in this town, because once we pointed out, their failure becomes their risk, not ours. You know, and if I had my way, I'd instruct somebody to just go cut them and alleviate the, because they're not power lines. So it's, you know, just cut them and, and solve the problem ourselves. So I would love the idea that we have a public meeting that with all of them, and we require them to be there and do this in our official capacity as street commissioners. You know, I'm just tired of this. They're so, you know, they're hide behind things, they don't make themselves available. I did speak with one man, and I was told to take pictures and send him an email, and they tried to get back to me. That's not the answer.
The only reason I brought it up, Madam Chairman, is because if I didn't bring it up, we wouldn't be at this level again. I've already been through, as Mr. McCrisky says, the crap with the utilities. When I was on the board before, we ran into trouble with the gas company. Canton Street was a mess, but yet they wanted to start right on Central Street, heading towards Carbs Corner. And I stood up, and I says, they get nothing. So they fixed Canton Street, because it was a mess. From Peter Ventressco's all the way up to Drake Ave was, was a disaster. They weren't compacting the roads right, they weren't even paving it right, and we were just, oh, here comes another one, pass it quick, it's the gas company. Well, they, they're held to the same as any other contractor in this town, and I won't be told to shut up and fix it, or sit down and decide what we're going to do about it. This is where we decide what gets done about it. This is where it starts. I'm not going to have a meeting on a meeting, but Joe's right, we got to get them in. Town manager's right, we got to get them in, split them on the same night, and, and solve it, because when the power goes down and the whole side of town starts bitchin', we're not going to look too good.
And winter is coming. So, so Mr. Tisdale, you're going to outreach, okay. The next is for the, regarding the public hearing. Did you want to postpone that until time that we can get a representative here?
Yeah, there should be a, we, I, I'm not going to vote on it until there's somebody here to discuss it.
Motion to postpone the hearing until we can get a representative.
Can I get a second to postpone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. I don't see Mr. Kavy. He might have stepped away, he's not feeling well. So that's four in favor and one absent, I guess. Okay. Thank you very much. And going back to our agenda item number six, which is the armory, potential uses. Now, I, like all of you, have talked to citizens, they've approached me, and we all want the best for the armory. I've heard of recreation center, police station, firing range, or even the private sector could use it, and just a couple of other examples. What is the best use for the armory? So I would like to start the discussion of maybe asking our citizens. But before I do that, I would like to allow Mr. Carrara some time, because he has had a, a voice on the use of the armory for some time, and so has Mr. McCrisky, and I'm sure Mr. Gito, and maybe even Mr. Kavy, if he were around. So, but we'll start, we'll do a round robin and, and see where we go from here.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Gito.
Isn't this one of the, one of the special projects...
Capital.
...that we've asked the, the citizens to weigh in on?
Yes, it is.
Do you want to have this discussion now, or do you want to wait until you get responses? I mean, it seems like it's a little bit premature. I mean, I understand, I'm not, I'm, I'm not denigrating all of the, the stuff that...
If you, if you want to wait till it comes in, yeah, we'll do that.
I mean, it, it seems to me that it would make more sense to do it after we get other responses, but I, look at, I'm not, I don't want to stop anybody else if, if they want to, to do something, but...
All, alls I was going to do was offer a situation on it, and if, if I was allowed to do it, I will, if you want to wait till...
Well, I mean, I'm not trying to, to, to not have that happen. I just, it just seems like it's a little bit off, a little bit off-center.
I was just going by the agenda. I was just going by the agenda. It said armory and the use, and there was a bunch of things there, and I was looking at them all, and then I was going to explain to you what transpired, what should transpire, and it might solve us not even waiting for input from the outside.
If you would, if you would like to share, Mr. Carrara, and then Mr. Tisdale, what is, you think would be a best approach to have a survey done so the citizen, so we do have a, and you mentioned it earlier, tonight, we have a capital project plan survey. It's on our website now, and Pam McCarthy did a very good job of, I think she started with stuffing the envelope for our tax bills, and then she transferred that to our, the website. But what would be a good process so we can pay some specific attention to the armory? So first, if Mr. Tisdale wants to go first, or Mr. Carrara, I don't know who, you seem kind of...
Well, generally, to start off, I, I think you should start with this board, for sure, to kind of narrow your direction of where you want to go with the use of the armory. The uses you have on listed here are uses that have been talked about in the past, and I'm sure there's more uses. If you were going to do a survey, which may be a, a great way to move forward with this, I think you would want to make sure you have every type of use that you have here, maybe other uses, and then send it out to the public. PM has sent it to all town meeting reps. She's sent it to all the boards and committees. It's on the town website, and it's in the mailings. So you'll, you'll get a good, good feel for what the, the residents of Stoughton want to see for the use of the armory by doing that. But they're only going to vote on what they see in front of them. So I would make sure you have enough uses down to give a good, good idea of what you want, and also leave an opening for, like, like you have on here, other. Maybe there's another use nobody's thought about that might trigger another conversation. But I do like those Google Forms, those surveys. They're easy to create, and you get a lot of good data back from them.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Carrara?
I don't, I don't plan that deep.
Oh, okay.
I want to, I, I get right to it. I've been watching this thing, and people turn their nose up at it, other people want to do other things with it. It's a sad state when there should have been a fire station, but things escalate and get out of control. Other people don't do what they should do when they're in control of the Board of Selectmen. So you look on here and you see recreation center. Well, the recreation guy kind of threw different channels, gave us a little pushback on it, wants to be in the center. Everybody wants to be in the center because they can't get to it and all that. So I'm taking the recreation center out. You don't want it, you don't want to have a decent site and a big site, people will get there. Now, now we lost the fire station, now you're going to lose that. To have it just as a firing range is ridiculous. It's a waste of a building. There's a little shooting range inside there, and what I think we should really look at is the fact that we're going to be adding on to the Stoughton Police Station sooner or later. So why don't we do the right thing? Give them an enormous place to be at. They were at the, the armory for a short time before, when we were building the one that was supposed to be good for 100 years. Now, maybe we shouldn't put the money into it. Maybe we should focus on the fact that that's going to be the new Stoughton Police Headquarters. It's certainly a big enough place, can more than handle what they do, and the, and the chief, Donna McNamara, said to us before that they have area cars that are covering the areas. So where she is doesn't make a problem, because they respond by the area cars. If they need more help, then the station responds. That station's in, would be in a good spot. So what you do is, let's focus and use our intelligence and not expand into big committees and take another four, six, 10 years to decide what to do with it, because I'm sure by then somebody will have another idea that, why we can't do this. It should have been a fire station, and then someday the firemen are going to be crying, they need a station up there, and we're going to have to say, nope, you got the one you wanted. I think we should look at it as a new permanent place for the Stoughton Police Department, put everything down there, take the old police department and give it to the recreation center, and make that, if you want to be in the downtown, that's what you get. You can go to Halloran Park from there, the kids won't be on 139, on 27, dangerous. Then we can revitalize our downtown at the same time by getting the grant money, crushing that damn bank that we pissed all the money away on, and put the parking garage there that's going to lighten up the square, because there's nothing going to happen in that square till we get parking down there. We can talk about everything, we're going to talk about this dumping money into this granite giant out here, the depot, and I don't know who's going to make money on it, because there's not enough parking for them. The lady on Wyman Street's having trouble with parking already, I've heard. See, sometimes I hear a little more than other people. I don't like to chirp about it, but we got to use our intelligence. We're the five people here that make some hardcore decisions. Some of them might not all be right, but I can assure you, this one's the right one. You're going to kill three birds with one stone. We don't have to look at any other capital plans and do that. This is the focus, because once you get Chief Donna McNamara in that station down there, if you go down 138 and take a look at the old Lincoln Ford dealership down there, do you notice the cars are all underneath a giant mezzanine? That's what we can do for her down there, so her cars aren't out in the weather, in the weather. But that might come later on. But she'll be operating on a flat piece of property with a ton of room, a ton of space, better access. Everything's going to be on a ground floor, not going upstairs. That got to be fixed at the, the station all the time, because the water's coming off the roof. If you want a rec center, I'm sure he can make a pretty decent rec center out of that place in there. You move a few walls around, something like that. He's already got a community room. What more can you ask for? He's got access to his, his Halloran Park like they want, but we'll be able to do something and put in a parking garage. I spent a lot of time on this over the weekend, looking at it and dividing it out and figuring what to do. They'll also have their shooting range in there. Will it take something to bring it up to the standards of today's standards? Yeah. But I am certainly not going to go for wasting a whole building, and then we're going to talk about, wow, maybe we can make $6 from Randolph. They'll come over and shoot, and $12 from here. $12 from here. I was the one who brokered the deal to allow them to shoot on the gun club property that I belong to. They get plenty of service down there outside. We did that as a benefit to the Stoughton Police Department. This is what we should be looking at. And that's all I got to say, I'm just saying, this is where you got to use a little common sense and a little intelligence, and that's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrara. Mr. McCrisky?
No, Madam Chair, I think we've talked enough.
Okay.
I'm not going to add to it. Got a lot to say, but not now.
All righty. Anyone else? Okay. So, there we have...
I think that Scott's views are very important. I think he's laid out a plan. If there are other plans, we'll probably find out about them. I mean, I saw other things earlier on. I haven't have any alternative suggestions at the moment.
All right.
I may have upset you, Scott, by suggesting that we get other input, because you seem to be very unhappy with...
I'm not unhappy, I'm just...
You're frustrated.
I worked hard with another gentleman, Brian Clancy, when he was the Veterans Agent.
Yeah.
We went over and talked to the Commandant, we stopped an auction.
I'm not your enemy, I'm not your enemy.
I handed a building to a gentleman and said, "There's your fire station." And somebody else told him it wasn't earthquake-proof. It was only two buildings in this town on the fallout shelter, and what were they? The Stoughton Library and the Armory. The high school wasn't even considered anymore. Those two buildings, and that's not earthquake-proof? I guess a Nike missile could hit it, but it's not earthquake-proof. So, I'm very upset that I did work hard, and then simplicity didn't come to fruition. I spent time with a gentleman who's in the business. We had that armory as a fire station, as a fire station. $2.6 million, and he said, "You know what? Let's just round it out and call it five, because there might be something." Right? Because you don't know what's going to happen. So for $5 million, $5 million, you would have had a fire station. $30 million later, it's in the swamp.
Okay. So our next steps are to put it on the website for a survey.
Done.
This will be the focal. The other one is kind of embedded with the other items. So what would you suggest? Can Pam McCarthy help, or someone else?
So the uses you, if I understand you correctly, you'd like us to do, after we get the data collected from the special capital survey, and get the public's input that they endorse, looking at the armory again, as one of their top capital projects, you want to do another survey to drill down to these uses, to see what the public would support? Are there any other uses you want to add to this list?
I don't have any other uses. That last bullet point, what is that, the sixth one down? Is that six? No, five. The fifth one, "Other." Citizens can write in other uses, which would, may or may not work, but at least it will be considered, because that's all we want to do, is consider it. I think Mr. Carrara gave good points to it being a fire station, and I bet once the citizens hear this, yeah, once they hear... Oh, I'm sorry, police station. Yeah. Police station.
Okay. We'll put that survey out.
Okay. So the first survey, that's been out for, she had to wait until the mailing for the tax bill, right? So that's been out a couple of weeks now.
Yeah. So the mailing's been out, I know an email's been sent to town meeting reps, I believe, yesterday, or it'll be in the next day or two. So I'd say we wait a couple more weeks for the data to come in, and then collect that information.
Okay. So I wonder, I'm curious to know what kind of responses we're getting?
Yeah.
If people are actually responding to the survey, and then are we going to tally that on the website as well? Like, so people know what the results were of the survey?
Yeah, we can do that. And I think for you, maybe your November 29th meeting, maybe we can give you an update where that stands, what the numbers are at, and go from there.
All righty. Thank you. Great, great discussion. Moving right along to our final agenda item, which is conflict of interest policy, votes may be taken. Does anyone want to modify or edit the policy, or if not, we'll just make a motion to accept?
I was going to ask for a little more time to go through it a little deeper.
Okay. All right.
I was going to move to adopt it, because, no, we can do whatever, but we have a lot of things to deal with between now and the end of this year. We've got to put a long-range capital plan together and a budget, and determine what articles we want to move forward for town meeting. We've got to bring in a new town manager during this budget process and provide them with performance standards. And, I mean, I was going to say that we should adopt what was proposed. We can always change it.
We can always change it.
And I also was wondering if we need to send it around to the other boards and give them a little bit of warning that we're planning to do this, and just see if there's anything that would tilt with them. I mean, we don't have, this is not for town employees.
Yes, it is.
It is.
Yes, it is.
Then we probably should at least alert the employees about it. And, I mean, we don't have to do it forever, but it would just seem to make sense for at least a meeting or two to do that, but maybe I'm wrong. I mean, we could adopt it with the idea that if we get feedback, we can change it, which may be a better way of doing it, because then it's sort of off the table for a while, and it can come back on.
Well, if you read a couple of the union contracts, they have sort of some stuff in there that says if you did something that wasn't right, or was in conflict with another employee, I don't know, is this going to clash with that? Do we have to bargain it with them? Or can we just set the policy that we're setting the policy? That's the questions I had. Because they have some language in their contracts that kind of protects them from this, if you want to know. Because by us approving those, you really can't load something else on them, because it was in there, we bargained it in good faith. That they were kind of checks and balancing their own people without us.
Yeah. If I could add to that?
Tisdale.
I agree with Scott. I would check with town council, it'd be absolutely sure, but I'm pretty sure we would have to negotiate this and bargain it with unions. For non-union employees, this would apply. And then for anybody conducting business in a, for any board or commission, this would apply. But for employees, I think we need to dig deeper into that with council for sure, and then it may need to be bargained.
So, council reviewed and edited and literally wrote the policy for us, but I think in good faith, we should go back and ask the question. So should our motion be that it is accepted? What is the language, how would you say it? It does not supersede union contract language, or something to that effect?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, this is your policy for when you're conducting your business as a board.
That's right.
And if there's a union employee here, it does not apply to them just yet, until we get clarification from council on how we can get this bargained.
Okay. So then, how would, what would the motion be to...
That's the only reason why I said I wanted a few more things to look at it, because that was in my head, remembering the contracts, had some kind of verbiage in there that was sort of like this, but not as strong. And, we're the ones who are going to drop the hammer on this, but yet they are going to handle it within their own contract without us. Do you see what I mean?
So what we can do is actually postpone this until we talk with council...
We could table it till council gives us back something, if you wanted to do that.
And then put it back on the agenda at our next meeting.
If you table it, you can pull it up anytime you want.
Motion to table, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much, and...
I would propose that we not take it up for a month, at least, or a month and a half, until we deal with our obligations to get a budget together and at least get the town manager in place and operating. That would be my suggestion. That's not a motion. It's just a suggestion.
We'll see how that fits, because at our next meeting, we have our operational budget, our initial presentation. So, and then that's when everything starts stacking against us, because it's really time-sensitive. So it may be the next meeting is the next time to actually bring this up again, but we'll see. But I have to actually talk to town council.
Madam Chair, I appreciate what you just said, which leads me to a question. If we have a plan for the next few meetings, what things might be on the agenda, maybe it would be a good idea to share them with all the members of the committee, so that we all have a sense of where we might be going. Because when I get my agenda, it's just a new thing. It's not part of a plan.
Well, Mr. Gito, I can answer that question for you, because we, in good faith, Lena and I work very closely together, and we try to make sure we have all of our ducks in a row, all the paperwork, and if we do not, then it rolls to the next meeting.
No, I understand that, and that's not the question that I'm asking. I really am saying that if you have a plan for the next month or two months of things that are to be addressed, if you would lay them out, maybe they don't get on the agenda for the period that you had anticipated that. But we at least know that it's something that's going to come up within a couple of months. That's the level of detail that may be helpful.
We'll see, we know it's fun time, oh, you're going to say something, I was going to talk about our licensing renewal, you know, the fun time of the year for us. Go ahead, Mr. Tisdale.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it's okay with the board, we're going to do the preliminary presentation of the budget and capital articles at your next meeting. I currently have a spreadsheet created for capital articles, and requests are in with departments, I'm receiving them as we speak this week. So you'll have capital articles to review for your next meeting. The budget, I plan on doing a presentation like you had last year, like a PowerPoint, with some very detailed information in it. Our budget team has been spending hours and hours and days going through the budgets, line by line, and you'll see the reason why we're doing that currently. And then that's going to be the 29th, and I would think every board meeting for the next month after that, you'll be talking about the budget and articles, and maybe even after that, so...
Yes. We love this time of year.
Yeah.
At least I do. Okay. So was there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
And was it second? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote ayes. And, Mr. McCrisky? Good night, everyone, and see you next time. Bye-bye.